Presidente. 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 Presidente.[84.11]
The maximum limit, the difference, we're allowed to bank that so that in the subsequent year, if we need it, we can, we can use that to, for an obligation. If an extraordinary item came up and it changed our appropriation, we would still be within statute if that happened. We are not in that situation, so it becomes, in effect, a paper entry, and we renew it every year because it only lasts for two years. So the two years, this year, the 2018, we will renew it, and 2016 will drop off the list. So it just, it's a matter of, of having the bank if in the event one day we need it.
Okay, thank you.
It's conservative.
And there was one other, the employment, I know it came up, you're introducing it as a resolution?
Yes.
Could you explain that briefly?
Sure. The, the DCA required that upon submittal of our budget this year, we needed to provide a resolution of the governing body that basically affirms that the governing body is aware of the rules associated with assessing employment opportunity when an individual has a criminal record. And so, that's all, so we have to submit it, so it's actually for the whole board, but it's, it's, it's in my area, but that's just what it relates to. So there's guidance that we have to follow.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners on Agenda Items Only?
Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive. This is on the monthly revenue report.
Sorry.
There is a line item, a section called Special Trust Fund, and the amount shown in the Special Trust Fund is $4,500. Could you explain what a Special Trust Fund is?
I'm not sure which one you are referring to.
Monthly Revenue Report, February 2018. The three items are zoning escrow deposits, planning escrow deposits, the one of particular interest.
Yes, when an applicant filed before.
Can I just ask my particular question?
Oh, sure.
It says COA, Council on Affordable Housing Trust, $3,000. Could you tell me what the source of that $3,000 is?
What the exact, who paid the $3,000, I don't have that information with me, but under the COA laws, right now, if someone is to actually do residential development, there is a fee that's charged, that's an amount, it's one and a half percent.
How much percent?
One and a half percent.
1.5% of what?
The assessed value.
Of the assessed value?
Of.
And so in February 2018, what development was that?
It's $3,000, it's very small, and it could be an individual house, all right, not, not an apartment building or something large.
Okay, so you're saying we collect 1.5% of the fee on residential?
Correct.
Development?
Yes.
So there was a new house built in?
Could be, I, I don't have the details of that.
You don't have the details?
But I, in principle, COA fees are collected when development occurs for residential development in the amount of one and a half percent.
Okay.
I don't have the specifics of that $3,000 with me.
So would you know how much is in the entire COA fund right now from this collection of 1.5%?
Sure, I don't have the exact amount, but it's in, it's in excess of $400,000.
So we have $400,000 in a COA trust account, and how is that money dispersed, that $400,000?
Sure, it, it, there's things that it can be used for. So one of those areas that it can be used for is to, in effect, fund to cover the cost for litigation. So as the city, we are, in the township, we're involved in litigation with regard to COA in terms of what our fair share housing requirement is, and we've been in litigation for that. So one, it could cover up to 20% of the amount, the fees, right, for that. The rest of the money stays, and normally, under COA, you would have five years to disperse the money using a criteria, establishing a criteria, and the money could be used up to $10,000 per, like, a family in need, so to do structural improvement, like a new roof or a new furnace, we could distribute the money that way. Because COA has been frozen, and it's in the courts, and with litigation, we're still waiting to understand what could be the use, how we could distribute those funds, but it would go through a very formal process.
Okay, so that is up to $10,000 per application?
Right, when we're able to take applications, but as of right now, we're not, and we're not about to.
And we, you met an executive session tonight to get an update on the COA litigation, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, and when will the citizens be informed of the status of the litigation?
That's, Alan?
When we're in a position to reveal any potential settlement or conclusion. Up till now, we can't reveal any of the details.
Okay, so a potential settlement, you think, might be forthcoming?
Every, that's possible.
Possible.
But we're, we're not there yet.
We're not there yet. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners on Agenda Items Only? Seeing that we'll go to a Board of Commissioner announcements, Commissioners?
I just have one announcement, Mayor. I, I'd just like to thank my Parks Department, I know this sounds a little self-serving, I don't usually do it, but for all the storms combined, so far, we have responded to over 104 calls relative to storm damage, and I believe the only cleanup that we have left is some trees that, that have been fallen and some damage in our parks. So I'd like to thank my entire Parks Department for the effort put forth in keeping our roads open and keeping our people safe.
Hopefully, we don't eat them again tonight.
Hopefully not. Take out the rosary beads.
Anybody else, Commissioners?
I, I have a little announcement to make, too. I just wanted to update everyone. Today, I met with the state police cyber units today about, you know, how we can manage through all of the internet, any threats, and I just wanted to mention their names. Trooper Brad Baylor was there, along with Christopher Kay. It was an unbelievable experience, and there's a lot to learn there, and there's a lot to do to prevent things from happening. So it was, it was an interesting afternoon, and I just wanted to, you know, give them a big thank you from our commission meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'm happy about that, I was happy to be able to set that up.
Yeah, great.
I'm glad, I'm glad that happened, really excited about that.
Any other announcements?
Just a simple following, I planned to do the same thing as Commissioner Tucci. The last storm where the governor announced a state of emergency at 8:00 Tuesday night before the storm came, I just wanted to thank, again, my team, because the next morning, while, when you have a state of emergency, you know, non-essential employees can be home, but Town Hall was open because our employees came in for that. And so we, we acknowledge the police, we acknowledge the DPW for their efforts, but I think, you know, we are fortunate in that we have many dedicated employees in town.
And the Parks.
Well, you, you, you did.
All right.
All right, all right.
Let's go to ordinance introductions, Commissioner Evans.
Thank you. I have ordinance number 80, 3382, which relates to our cap bank, which I just recently explained. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertise in the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on February 20th, 2018, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
I'm sorry, April 17th, I'm sorry, just to correct the date, I read the wrong line. Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
All right, the public hearings, this is ordinance number 3380, an ordinance to amend an ordinance codified in the Code of the Townshipality, Chapter 532, entitled Rent Control, particularly Article 1, Rent Control Procedures, Section 5 and 6. Would anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3380?
Penny Landry, 135 Lakeside Drive. The ordinance calls for an owner or a landlord to make an application to the rent leveling board for increased rents in an apartment building based on economic hardship relating to that building if the landlord is qualified under subsection A2, where the landlord is unable to realize a 7% return on investment. So this ordinance says that if, I just want to be clear, if the owner of an apartment building is unable to have a 7% return on their investment, then they can increase the rent. But it doesn't really say how much they can increase the rent, or, or at least I missed that. Could someone explain how much they are able to increase the rent if they are not making a 7% return on their investment? And what number do we use as their investment? Is it the cost of the building? What is that number, return on investment, based on?
Go to page two.
Page two?
Number eight.
Number eight on page two tells them how much they can exceed, shall not exceed 15%.
Okay. What was it again?
15% the way I read it.
So they can increase rents by 15%?
If, if they're having a.
In 12 months.
And, and they have to bring it to the rent leveling board for approval.
Okay, so they go to the rent leveling board, and they say, "I had less than a 7% return on my investment, and I would like to raise my rents 15%," and then who makes that decision?
The rent leveling board.
The rent leveling board, and does the rent leveling board have a chairman?
Yes.
And who is that?
Jim Cookte.
Jim Cookte is the chairman, and who is the attorney?
Joe Hannon.
Joe Hannon? And what is the basis for return on investment? Is it the cost of the building, what is it?
Mr. Genotap, do you have any answer to that?
Mr. Mayor, I don't really, I don't know, this is just an amendment, just to give the, the rent leveling board more authority to conduct a hearing and to inquire from the landlord, and to make the landlord provide the information that they need to make that judgment. There's no criteria, it's going to be, I, I don't, I'm not aware of the criteria, but the rent leveling board has the authority to have that hearing and determine whether the landlord is in need of a hardship increase, and this ordinance was really cleaned up to give them more authority to do that. So it's not changed, that's not, that part was not changed from the original ordinance. Really, some of the enforcement and the notification and the hearing issues were, were changed to make it more, give the rent leveling board more authority to, to handle that.
Okay.
So that, the part that we're talking about was not changed.
But the part, was the part changed about the 15% increase, is that a change?
No, that, that did not change, yeah, that did not change.
Okay, and then?
Let me just say, please, I don't believe that changed. It's been a while since we made these amendments, but I don't believe that, that was changed at all.
Okay, so given that there seems to be some question about what changed or what changed, didn't change, I would like to make a request as part of this hearing, that the five commissioners become fully diverse in what did change or what is staying the same.
I don't, I don't think that's necessary, because we worked off of a version that was also redlined to show them the changes.
Can I finish making my request?
Certainly.
Thank you. That the Board of Commissioners thoroughly study this and understand what changes were made or what stays the same before voting on it. Thank you.
May I, Mayor? Mr. Mayor, sure. This was, this was some, we did this some time ago, if you may remember, and we made several changes that were redlined so that the commissioners could follow the changes. We had Mr. Hannon, Mr. Cookte come and explain to the commissioners what the changes were and why they were, what they were needed for. This was just kind, we, we kind of neglected to actually put this up for vote, so I, I believe, and again, of course, I defer to the commissioners, but I, this has been vetted by the commissioners and read, and made, suggested changes to it, actually, that ended up in the, in the ordinance. So I just want that to be on the record as to what took place. You may not remember, we do, we deal with a lot of ordinances, so this one, we spent a lot of time on about a year ago, I would think, perhaps it was, so, anyway, I just want to bring that to your attention.
Anybody else like to be heard on ordinance number 3380? Seeing none, move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
I abstain.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
I abstain.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Budget introduction, Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have to meet our statutory requirement to introduce our budget for 2018. This is a introduction, because our state aid hasn't been finalized yet, we will not be able to adopt a budget consistent with last year closer to the June timeframe. Once the state gets closer to reconciling their budget, we will be able to get authorization to adopt ours. We, it's not something that we are holding off on waiting for, because we've made, we will be making application for transitional aid, it is a requirement that we have to wait for the state's approval before we can adopt our budget. As you know, and we've talked about this before for some of you, that the commissioners were working very hard in, in this fall to begin to look for areas where we can reduce our spending and to control our, our overall cost. That was, in, in reality is, how do we absorb revenue loss? Last year, we were able to, to delay a increase in our taxes in the November tax bills by identifying a series of, of cuts to our budget last year, once we were notified late in the year that our state aid was going to be lower than what we were told. So we had to absorb in November, $1 million in order to avoid an adjusted bill in the November timeframe. Recognizing that that's only one-time revenue, we have to look to this year to figure out how do we absorb that fully. So the commissioners, which collectively have been unanimous in, in terms of trying to figure out how we save money and absorb that. At this point in time, from an appropriation standpoint on our budget introduction, we have a $64,000 increase in appropriations. So when you look at the pluses and minuses overall, we've been able to keep appropriations substantially flat. The areas where we have a problem is, is on the revenue side. We don't have the revenue to replace the revenue that we were able to deuse last year, and that's highly dependent upon, solving that is highly dependent upon how we resolve our state aid with the state of New Jersey in terms of our transitional aid. We were in a better position, given the work that the commissioners did, to actually have lower, further reductions in our appropriations, but three major things occurred, and those, two of those were bills that we received. So we were planning on the fact that our sewer bill would not increase because of what we were, were told earlier, but when the bill came through, that bill was $187,000 higher than what was anticipated, so we have to account for that in 2018's budget process. The second element of our challenge was that we received our pension bill from the state of New Jersey, which reflected a $389,000 increase in the cost of pensions. So.
Yep.
Okay. The last thing that impacted us from an appropriation side was the fact is that in our water utility, we had actually lower revenues, so lower water consumption than what we historically have, requiring an adjustment that the operating budget has to absorb right now until we can evaluate what, what the trend of that will be, for $343,000. So lower revenues in the water utility related to consumption, a higher sewer bill, and a higher pension bill, all total, that's $919,000, of which we were fully prepared to absorb, but those bills came in, and there's, there's no opportunity to absorb those right now. The last piece relates to the fact that while our aid was cut to $3.6 million, down from $5.5 million, statutorily, we can only anticipate 85% of the aid we received the previous year. So since we received $3.6 million, and we can only anticipate 85%, there's a 15% shortfall in revenue, or $551,000. If you look at those four items, it represents, right now, on introduction, the increase in the tax levy to the taxpayer right now, which is $1,466,451. Because this is not the adoption, and it's only introduction, we have to continue to find ways to absorb these costs and resolve them. So that's where we are at, at, at tonight, so it's a progress report, the commissioners are going to continue to work through how we absorb these, these costs if we can, and we, again, we will not adopt our budget until later in the late May-June timeframe, pending approvals with the state of New Jersey. So with that, I will read, "The municipal budget of the Township of Nutley County of Essex for the fiscal year 2018 be resolved that the following statements of revenue and appropriations shall constitute the municipal budget for 2018 be further resolved, that said budget be published in the Nutley Sun in the issue of April 5th. The governing body of the Township of Nutley does hereby approve the following as the budget for 2018, so move."
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, on introduction.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes, on introduction.
Commissioner Petrako?
Yes, on introduction.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Set, Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, let's go to resolutions, Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas bids for the remodel and ADA compliance of the first floor restroom of the Nutley Public Safety Building at 220 Chestnut Street were received and opened on February 25th, 2018, and whereas UGV Construction, 45 Harrison Street, hailed in New Jersey was the lowest responsible bidder at $45,100, and whereas funds are available from CDBG Funding Year 2017 from account number T19-909-901, in the amount of $49,000 for the total project, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that a contract for the remodel and ADA compliance of the first floor restroom of the Nutley Public Safety Building be awarded to UGV Construction. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
This next resolution I introduce on behalf of myself and Mayor Scarpelli, and it reads as follows. Whereas the duly authorized representatives from the Township of Nutley and Good Faith have negotiated a three-year collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local 97, and whereas municipal employees they represent concerning wages, hours, terms, and other conditions of employment for the term January 1, 2013 through December 31st, 2015, and whereas the agreement has been lawfully and properly ratified by the Teamsters Local 97 and Nutley's authorized representatives and approved by the Board of Commissioners, whereas said agreement was previously extended through December 31st, 2016, and whereas Teamsters Local 97 seek to further extend the terms of such agreement for an additional year to December 31st, 2017, and whereas Teamsters Local 97 and the Board of Commissioners have approved and find it in the best interest of the township that the above-mentioned amendment to the agreement be executed, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey hereby authorizes extension of said agreement. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. I have several resolutions. The first resolution has a lot of words in it, it, it simply is authorizing NW Financial Group to do the compliance review, which is not to exceed $1,500 related to our outstanding bond application, applications. Whereas the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, New Jersey, has previously issued bonds, bond anticipation notes, and other debt obligations. Whereas in connection with the issuance of certain, of the bonds and for purposes of assisting underwriters to comply with Rule 15C-12 under the Exchange Commission Act of 1934, the Township has coveted and entered into one or more undertakings or agreements to provide continuing disclosure to the public marketplace. Whereas the continuing disclosure obligation requires the Township to file certain financial information and notice of certain events in specified places and at specified times. Whereas the Township is desirous of retaining a professional firm that specializes in continuing disclosure matters to make the necessary filings at the specified places and specified times as part of the Township's continuing disclosure obligation. Whereas funds are available in account 801-208-205, subject to the adoption of our budget, and has been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley as follows. The mayor and township are hereby authorized and directed to execute an agreement with NW Financial Group in Hudson Place and Hoboken for services, professional audit services for a total amount not to exceed $1,500 in accordance with a proposal dated March 9th, 2018. This contract is awarded without competitive bidding as a professional service in accordance with NJSA 4811-5-1A of the Local Public Contracts Law, because the contract is for a service performed by a person authorized by law to practice a recognized profession that is regulated by law. Third, notice of this applica, a notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun, the legal newspaper of the Township of Nutley, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
As previously mentioned, with our budget submission, we're required to submit a record of this resolution. Whereas NJSA 484-5, as amended by PL 2017C183, requires the governing body of each municipality in the county to certify that their local unit's hiring practices comply with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's enforcement's guidance in the consideration of arrest and conviction records in the employment decision under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 before submitting its approved annual budget to the Division of Local Governmental Services. Whereas members of the governing body have familiarized themselves with the contents of the above referenced enforcement guidance and with their local unit's hiring practices as they pertain to consideration of an individual's criminal history, as evidenced by the group's affidavit form of the governing body attached here, too. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, hereby states that it has complied with NJSA 48:4-5 as amended by certifying that the local hiring units' hiring practices comply with the above referenced enforcement guidance and hereby direct the clerk to cause to be maintained and available for inspection a certified copy of this resolution and the required affidavit to show evidence of said compliance, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petrako?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas IRS has provided guidance requiring the deductibility of prepaid 2018 taxes. This resolution relates to the fact that right around the end of the year, taxpayers came in, and some paid a portion of the year for 2018, some paid a half a year, some paid the entire year. Subsequent to those last days of the year, the IRS has come out with guidance that basically has said only the taxes that were previously billed will be deductible on the 2018 tax return, so if someone has paid for the entire year and they would want a return of that money, this is an authorizing resolution that would allow that to happen. So whereas the IRS has provided guidance regarding the deductibility of prepaid 2018 property taxes, whereas third. property taxes, whereas third and fourth quarter 2018 taxes have not been levied, and whereas the township wishes to permit refunding payments made towards unbilled third and fourth quarter 2018 property taxes, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, that a refund of third and fourth quarter 2018 property taxes will be permitted on the basis that said payments are in excess of the tax or assessment levied at this time under the following conditions: One, the refund will only be considered upon written request of the taxpayer; Two, if a mortgage company has made payment on a quarter that has already been paid by the property owner, the refund shall be made to the mortgage company. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State of New Jersey that the treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of tax charges in the amount of $19,266.50 for the following blocks and lots contained herein. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State of New Jersey that the treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of property taxes in the amount of $2,396.37 for block 6504 Lot 9 due to successful tax court judgment. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley that the treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of property tax in excess of the tax or assessed levied. This relates to my previous resolution, in the amount of $8,529.32 for block 4002 Lot 9. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has been authorized to enter into contracts with NJ Start Contract Vendors for in 2018 by Resolution 295-17, and whereas Leslie Digital Imaging LLC in Cranberry, New Jersey, South River Road, excuse me, Cranberry-South River Road Number 4, Jamesburg, New Jersey, has been awarded New Jersey State Contract Number A404462/G-2075 for the term of the contract ending January 11, 2019. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley authorizes the purchasing agent to purchase from Leslie Digital Imaging utilizing the NJ Start Contracts for the remainder of the contract term. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner Petracca?
Whereas the Township of Nutley Department of Public Safety has a need to acquire services of labor council on unfair and open contract pursuant to provisions of NJSA 1944-20.4 or 20.5 as appropriated, and whereas the Director of Public Safety has determined and certified in writing that the value of the acquisition will exceed $17,500, where the anticipated term of the contract is January 1, 2018 through December 31, 2018, and may be extended as approved by the governing body. Whereas the law offices of Serensky and Hollenbach LLC has submitted a proposal indicating they provide labor council at the rate of $150 per hour, and whereas the firm Serensky and Hollenbach has completed business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that the firm has not made any reportable contributions to political or candidate's committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit the firm of Serensky and Hollenbach from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. And whereas the funds are available from account 8-01-012-205 not to exceed $50,000, and will be appropriated in 2018 budget, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley authorizes a contract with the firm Serensky-Hollenbach as described hereon, and be further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification and the determination of the value be placed on file with the resolution, and be further resolved that the notice of this action shall be printed in the Nutley Sun to accordance with the Local Public Contracts Law. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that the township clerk is hereby authorized to advertise for seal bids for surplus equipment that is no longer in use by the township. The equipment/vehicles as listed below be it further resolved that the equipment is to be sold as is and where is, and bids are to be received on Wednesday, April 18, 2018, at 3:00 PM prevailing time in the commission chambers, Township Hall, One Kennedy Drive in Nutley, New Jersey, at which time they will be publicly open and read. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Where a raffle application has been received from the following organization: Knights of Columbus, 14712, Holy Family Council License Number 1518, off-premise merchandise raffle to be held on Sunday, July 15, 2018. Whereas the application has been reviewed and approved by the municipal clerk in the police department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned license is approved and municipal clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expedition's conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
We're reading 462 Chestnut Street. Mr. Scarpelli, I have two, three questions, one for Mr. Evans and two for Mr. Petracca. Mr. Evans, in the recent open response, we sent Madam Clerk to a sexual harassment class. Is that going to be commonplace? Is everybody going to attend that? Will that generate sexual harassment awareness in the township?
The clerk attended a class, is that what you're saying?
According to open response, he attended a sexual harassment class.
Okay.
And I was curious, was he the only one that I saw on? Is there a reason that just one person attended?
We have to, as a board, have to discuss what policies or training. We would want our employees to attend. That hasn't happened yet.
Well, as of now, do we still, we don't have an employee handbook yet, do we?
We have an employee handbook. We have training every two years for supervisors and managers. The clerk has special training that she has to receive to keep her license and certification. But we do have a handbook. We're actually updating it now again, and we do have training every two years required by the Mel for all of our supervisors and managers. That's probably going to take place again this year because we, I think it was two years ago that we actually did it last. There is no requirement for the full employees of the township to be trained.
Training, and just, I just, please, have a go.
There's many different ways of training employees or people about sexual harassment. But, you know, we have a very straightforward, if somebody has a complaint, they can bring it to their supervisor or to the clerk. We haven't had anything that I can remember in years, at least as I've been township attorney. But we do maintain mandatory training every two years for supervisors to learn how to handle complaints that are brought, if they are brought, in their department.
So I can get a copy of the sample to offer?
Yeah, sure, of course.
Well, that wasn't ready. That's the only.
No, we have one. We are working on a new one. That one's not ready.
And?
We've always had one, Mr. Moore. I prepared it probably originally 20 years ago for the town.
Okay. Now I can offer the current one?
You can't offer the current one because it's in draft form. When it's done, the commissioners will review it, and then they will determine whether they're going to accept it or not.
How long would that be?
I'll have it to you tomorrow. I don't know. I'm sure you'll send me an opere every day until we give it to you, so.
Mr. Petracca, I hear we had a fire, an incident with our fire truck. Can you explain that to us, please? We did. We had a minor accident where the driver of the fire truck, it's kind of unclear in the police report if the car hit the fire truck or the fire truck hit the car, but there was no damage to report of the fire truck and there was minimal damage to the car. Who was driving the truck at the time? Are we allowed to say that, counsel?
I wouldn't say the individual employees. They have a right to be noticed if they're going to be discussed.
Mm-hmm.
Under the rights law, I would not name any employees.
Okay, that's okay. It'll be in the police report, correct?
Yes.
And on your resolution, 7918, this evening, you raised it from 17, 17.5 to 50,000. What is it, counsel, for? What is there? That's just the ceiling on it, is 50,000, because it will exceed 17,500. Serensky and Hollenbach, they do all our labor law or negotiations as a contract. We have the FMBA coming up for negotiations as well this year, any labor disputes or anything like that. So what we raised, it wasn't, it wasn't to 50,000, it was the hourly rate from 125 to 150. Can you anticipate using that much for one year? I hope I don't use any of it, to be honest with you, but it seems like every year, you know, with the way the world is, you know, you always have some sort of dispute that we need legal counsel on. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Tammy Rossi, 28 Colonial Terrace. I was at a joint meeting about two weeks ago, and Assistant had brought up the definition for density for mixed use in Nutley, and it was brought to the attention of the audience that since 2008, the zoning board has been requesting guidance on this definition because the zoning book itself has two different definitions, one in the front, one in the back. What we are also being aware of since that time, 2008, now this is over a span of 10 years, there have been multiple workshops listed or mentioned in meeting minutes regarding this definition for density of mixed use, and there was a consultant hired to recommend those definitions. We also learned that the planning board had approved it, but when it came time for the Board of Commissioners to be made aware, and they needed to put it on the agenda, not all of our commissioners were informed of this, and it was held up. And so, my question is, Mayor Scarpelli, you said it would only be a few more weeks before you came up with this definition for density of mixed use.
So let me update you, Ms. Rossi. The code department and the subcommittee of the planning board have met. A workshop meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, weather-dependent of the regular planning board meeting, to discuss it among the entire board. I anticipate that some sort of recommendation will come out of that meeting and be sent to the Board of Commissioners.
Is there a timeframe that you could provide?
Well, it depends on if that meeting happens tomorrow, which is questionable.
One more question, very quickly. Also, what are, Mayor Scarpelli, you mentioned that we were already at our 3 million gallon allocation of consumption from today, as signed by the state of our water consumption. Just this evening, we were told that our water consumption has gone down. I'm just wondering how that's possible in light of the apartments that have been going up in town?
The numbers don't lie, Ms. Rossi, that the, for last year, from what we can analyze from last year, we may have had a little wetter summer than normal, so people didn't have to water their lawns as much or fill up their swimming pools, and we had a decrease in consumption that we normally don't have.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Michael Odria, 133 High Street. Mayor Scarpelli, Commissioner Evans mentioned before that, I'm assuming, I'm thinking that our property taxes are going to get higher because of two reasons. You said that there's going to be new retirees, I guess, our pensions are going to go $396,000 more that we have to pay?
I didn't say that.
So what was the increase in pensions you were talking about?
The pension is a state pension, and we, as a municipality, are notified, Mayor, it's okay, we're notified, based upon our number of employees and what the requirement for funding is to the state pension, we're notified by the state of what that dollar amount is, just like it's a bill.
And we have to pay it, right?
We have to pay.
The homeowners, so, so that's, that's higher over last year, am I correct?
It's a $389,000 increase over last year, and yes, we all have to pay it.
Okay, and you mentioned the water.
Correct.
There's going to be an increase because we're not using as much water as we're supposed to, that we're going to have to pay another $350,000 combined as a town, correct?
Yes, the water utility, right, there's a separate water utility that operates that sends you your water bill.
Yes.
It's not part of your property tax bill. The water utility had a shortfall because of lower, primarily because of lower revenues, and as the mayor just mentioned, there's a lot of factors that go into determining water. It's not just apartment consumption, there's a lot of factors that will, in effect, create an increase or a decrease. So this year, we had a, we had a decrease. We have not, as a board, introduced a water ordinance to increase the water rate or look at fees. The only, only option we have right now, because we learned this late last week, is to include an appropriation in the operating budget right now to cover that shortfall, which is required by statute. Between now and introducing the budget, adopting the budget, there may be more information and investigation in that. That could change that number.
That's something that the homeowners of this town will have to pay, correct?
Is part of their, if we don't increase the water rate, it will be part of the property tax bill, but if there's an adjustment on the water side, for whatever reason or however, that will be determined, because it hasn't been determined yet, it would be part of the water bill.
I could only imagine it to be like a lot of homeowners moving out, so there's less water being moved, other than what he said, the mayor said about, you know, there was the rain and all that.
It's interesting, your speculation that people are moving out, because people are moving in.
People are moving out.
Sure they are.
The old, the people that have been here for years that didn't want to move out. That brings me to the other subject. Since you are more experienced than the majority of people in this town, and I guess on this board, well, I'm sure these guys are, the gentlemen here are experienced, that these increases in bills, according to pensions, you would know last year that this would have been passed off, passed off on us. So what I'm trying to get is, within knowing what might be coming in the future, it's a possibility, I noticed last year you gave our, some of our first responders a nice wage increase through arbitration, obviously, and arbitration is killing us homeowners because we got to pay that bill. And I wish the people here would defend us from that any way possible. And this brings me to my other question. I understand, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Rogers, very adamant about term limits, and I, as a homeowner in this town, as a citizen of Nutley, New Jersey, and this country, I would like to know, for the other four gentlemen before me, how you feel about term limits? Are you for term limits or not for term limits for yourselves? Would anyone like to answer, other than Mr. Rogers, because I already know his answer? Commissioner Rogers?
I think, I'll answer. I think term limits are, in my opinion, they're by the voters, and the voters vote, if the voters don't like you anymore, they vote you out. That's how you get term limits.
Okay, so that means, well, you understand what he's saying, but I guess the other three gentlemen don't want to answer it. It's fine, thank you. Thank you. By the way, I am for term limits, and if I ever ran, I would be for term limits on myself, period.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Ms. Landry, 135 West Est. Drive. The joint meeting of the planning board, zoning board, Board of Commissioners, and Board of Ed, it's held a couple of weeks ago, and another citizen, he said there was a timeline that was presented. I took the timeline and I emailed it to our zoning board members and requested in the email that they respond if they had received the email or not. Well, I didn't get a response from anyone, so I attended the zoning board meeting last night, and I asked the members of the zoning board if they had received emails to their nutleynj.org email addresses that were listed on the township website. This was the zoning board meeting, 31918. Attorney McGovern was kind enough and respectful enough to answer my question, and here was her response. "I doubt that any of the members of the board did receive your email, because up until a month ago, I didn't even know that the board members had email addresses. That was done without telling anybody. When the board members found out about this, they said, 'I have an email in town? I didn't know that.'" She continued, "I don't know what's going to happen with that," meaning email addresses for the zoning board. "They have not been given a password or any instruction about these emails. I have my email address in my access because it was set up a few years ago. I can tell you that these board members have never been given access to their township My question is, we created email addresses for planning and zoning board members. We did not inform these planning and zoning board members that they had been, they had email addresses through the township set up for themselves, okay, according, at least to the zoning board. I did also send the same email to the planning board, requesting that they respond if they received it, and I got no responses. So my question is, we created emails for two boards. We took the time to list those emails on our township website. Concerned citizens might have gone to that website, used, picked up an email address and said, "Oh, I think I'll ask the chairman of the planning board this. I think I'll ask the zoning board member this." Well, that was a futile effort because they didn't know they had the email addresses. Where did the emails go? And a citizen who sent an email got no response, so they think, wow, that's not very responsive or respectful to a citizen to not answer their email. So they thought less than kindly about a planning and zoning board member that they had reached out to while that planning and zoning board member had never even been informed they had an email address or how to check it if some citizen did take the time to reach out to them. So for me, this shows there's a lapse somewhere in what we do in order to improve communication and how it's executed. So my question is, who is the person in the IT department who is responsible? As you said, we have managers and supervisors who we send through training, who we pay a salary to. So who is the person in the IT department who is responsible for creating processes and procedures regarding emails and then communicating those processes and procedures to those people who have been assigned emails?
Mr. Mayor, may I answer for a moment?
Sure.
The issue of the emails, which you have been emailing myself and Clerk and everyone else about, is frankly-
No, I have just emailed you and the Clerk.
I'm speaking now.
You said everyone else.
Thank you.
Okay. Who else have I emailed?
Thank you. This is my chance. You asked a question, let me answer it. Frankly, I don't think those members should have email addresses because the members of the public should not be reaching out to board members. They are quasi-judicial members who vote on applications on only information brought to them in the public. They should not be, my recommendation is that those emails be deleted, and that any attempts to contact them would be inappropriate by any members of the public regarding applications or anything coming before their boards. They sit up here, they watch what happens in public, they watch the public record. Citizens can get up and make comments at the public record if they want the board members to hear their points. Emails to board members should have never happened, and I have recommended that they be deleted. The reason they don't know about them is because there was no direct approval for them to have them. I think IT was just being proactive in providing everyone with an email address without there being an absolute approval by the Commissioners. So my recommendation, because of their standing as quasi-judicial members of these boards, that they do not have separate emails where members of the public can contact them. Any inquiry to the board can be made through Mr. Cazira or Miss, or Diana McGovern, and if they feel it's appropriate for that information to be disseminated amongst their committee, then they absolutely have the right to do that. But I really feel very strongly, and I haven't addressed the full Commission on this, that those email addresses should not have been issued and should not be issued. So I don't know if that 100% answers your question, but it, you know, it is, I saw your emails about it, and it directed me to speak to Ms. McGovern and speak to some members of the Commission. So that's the answer that I would like to put on the record, because I feel strongly that you can't have members of the public reaching out to board members, because if a board member has to make a vote, and only one read the email, and maybe there's important information in it, and the rest don't have it, then the applicant is not getting a fair shake. And so I really think that any commentary to the board should be made at the public session. We know that there's commentary, and that's, my position as Township Attorney. Thank you.
I happen to agree with you, however-
I saw you shaking your head yes, I thought you were.
My concern is that someone took it upon themselves to communicate, however many it is, fourteen email addresses to the citizens of Nutley, having them think that those were active email addresses in a way to communicate. The question I ask-
More proof that we're not perfect. More proof.
The question that I ask is, who is the person who makes the decisions as the supervisor asks to create email addresses for township employees or board members and puts them up on the website? Who is that person?
I have no idea.
You do not know who?
All I can tell you is that this is not a topic of information that deserves five minutes of investigation into that issue because it's a non-issue. And if we're worried about some IT representative being proactive and probably thinking they were doing the right thing, I think it's a waste of time to even worry about who did it. We need to worry about the real issues, and that's making sure that the applications are properly heard, that the board members get the right information, and it's disseminated through the proper people. I'm not disagreeing with you-
Well, and to that point, one of our Commissioners communicated-
But what do you want us to do, Penny? Penny, if we find out who it is, what do you want us to do? What do you want us to do?
One of our, because it's the same person who also put up the township's complete map of all the security points on a LinkedIn page, and nothing happened then either, okay?
Okay.
So here's the, here's the last question I have, because one of our Commissioners at the joint meeting said that he did not receive the email with the recommendations that were made by the planning board and sent to the Board of Commissioners. So my question is, what is the township policy regarding board members of the zoning board and the planning board and the Board of Commissioners using personal email addresses for township business and communications?
There's no specific policy. The Commissioners have township email addresses, you know that, you send them emails. There is no particular policy about that. Don't forget, the board, zoning board members are not elected officials, they are volunteers appointed. It's a different situation with them. All the emails to the Commissioners, and again, I know what email you're referring to, you know, we get hundreds of emails weekly. I can't answer the question as to why one Commissioner may not have seen it, it's possible just didn't see it. But there's no specific policy, but most of, most if not 100% of our emails that are business-related are sent to the Commissioners at their Nutley addresses, their Nutley Township Commissioner addresses. So can't answer that question because who knows?
They don't have a policy. So that was-
Thank you, Ms. Landry.
Thank you.
Time's up. Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Ms. Semplich, 150 Ridge Road. During the recent joint meeting between the Commissioners, Board of Ed, zoning board, and the reference to potentially a higher number of turnover in homes that might be leading to some of the overcrowding issues in our schools, and I think the reference was 300 homes that turned over and people potentially, the kids were moving in. Is there an average that we look at over a certain amount of time, and is that 300 number or whatever number was quoted, Commissioner Evans? Is that typical or atypical of what we might see in a typical year in Nutley of homes turning over?
I haven't researched that. I was just aware of the fact that last year, there was over 300 homes that had turned over. Normally, today, we have less than 100 homes on the market for sale. Historically, the average is about 138 homes on the market at any given time, so there is a churn. I haven't actually tracked it to get a historical trend. The school board, when they did their analysis, used a demographer who anticipated, you know, what the turnover could be over a forward-looking 10-year period, and I think there's, there's an expert that actually has that data, which is at the school.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
I'm sorry. 133 High Street, Michael Odria. Since we are talking about the planning and zoning board, something occurred to me, because I don't have the answer, and I don't, but I'd like to be a clarification, I'd like to have some clarification. I noticed, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you're on the planning board, correct?
Correct.
And Commissioner Evans on the planning board, correct?
Correct.
Is that like normal policy to have the Mayor and another Commissioner on the planning board at the same time?
It's actually required.
It is required.
It's the Mayor or his designee and one elder elected official.
And how long has that been required?
It's by state statute.
No, by state, so like 20, 30 years or something like that?
Mr. Jenna Temple?
I have no idea. Mr. Moore knows, 1947. I'll accept that.
Okay. Because I just thought it was kind of, I mean, it hit me, the last time I was at the planning board meeting.
It's by statute.
It just hit me because I thought there would be like a little bit of a, I just didn't think it seemed right, like there could have been a conflict of interest, like improvement of apartments.
Also, township employee must be on the board.
Okay, but you're more important than that. You two guys, you're the Commissioners.
I'm just giving you another example of what's required.
Okay.
So, Mayor, I just want to clarify something. I think it says one other elected official, not one other elder elected official.
Did I say elder?
So just want to clarify that, because I'm not the oldest.
It's getting late.
Okay. Thank you for answering.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners?
Joan Rubino, 48 North Road. I would like to know why these meetings are not televised. All the other towns in the area, they're on TV.
I'm not going to, but I think that we have a piece of equipment that may be down as far as related to transmitting to the TV, but all are, all are recorded and they're up on the website, so.
Well, I think it would be a nice idea if you would televise them. Why is the equipment down? I mean, what is the problem? It can't be dissolved.
I don't have, I don't have that answer. I think, I think the, I think that the, it's been ordered, but it takes time.
It's a piece of equipment on the Board of Ed side, because years ago, when the Public Access Channel was turned over to the Board of Ed, all right, along with all of that equipment, it just stayed there, all right? And there's a piece of equipment that is in disrepair that needs to be replaced, and my understanding is, is that they're in the process of doing that. But prior to that piece going down, everything was in fact put up on the Public Access Channel.
The gentleman mentioned term limits, and we know how you feel, Mr. Scarpelli. Would you be willing to ask the others how they feel about term limits?
That's up to them if they want to respond.
Is anybody willing to respond?
I'll respond, yeah. Personally, I, I agree with the Mayor. I think the voters determine term limits. I mean, our history is very rich. We go back with folks like Carmen Irecchio, Harry Chenoweth, John Lucy, Frank Caciola, I mean, and on and on and on, and these folks served with distinction and honor for many years, and I guess until such time, as the voting public feels that their Commissioners are not serving their interest, then at that point, they need to institute term limits on them.
How about leaving it up to the voters? Is there any way that you could put that on the ballot and let the voters decide if we want term limits or not?
That I wouldn't know. Mr. Madden, Jenna Temple, do you have an answer to that question?
You'd have, I think you could put anything you want on, but I think you'd have to have the public providing, thank you, thank you very much, petition with a certain number of signatures, of which I'm not sure of the number.
Find out with the-
How many? Good. So you get a lot of answers in the crowd tonight.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none? Make a motion that we close tonight's session.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Dooty?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Stay safe, everyone.
Time is 9:32.